The court to order, Commissioner Abshur, would you please do the invocation for us?
Let's pray. Merciful and gracious and kind loving Heavenly Father, Father God, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for the blessings of life. Lord, I ask you this day to bless all whom duty will bind me to pray for this world over. Father God, I pray that you will bless our families and watch over each and every one of them. Give us a good mind and help us to do the things that we need to do for this county. Lord, forgive us when we fail. You go with us and watch over us in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. The next item is, is there a motion to appoint Penny Burke as acting fiscal court clerk? Lisa's not here today.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Abshur. Let it run. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Scollit?
Present.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Abshur?
Present.
All right. We have a quorum. We are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Bruce Collins if he would lead us in the pledge. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna renege on that. I'm gonna ask Bo to lead us in the pledge of allegiance today.
(laughing) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Bo. All right. Next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the county public library district tax rates. There was a mistake that we caught last time. However, the library district board that is appointed by the fiscal court lowered from last year the taxes on real property from 10.5 cents to 10 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. It's two years in a row where that rate has been cut. The tax on personal property will remain the same as, as did the tax on motor vehicles and watercraft. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the tax rates? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me back up. I'm wrong. The rate on personal property also was lowered from 12.24 to 10.24. So that is a, about a, without me doing the math, about a 15% reduction in that tax. So the property, the tax on real property and personal property were both lowered this year. The motor vehicle and watercraft tax stayed the same. So is there a motion to acknowledge receipt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the Board of, Pike County Board of Education District Tax Rates. This year, the taxes were lowered from 86.1 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value to 83.4 cents on real property. And they're stayed the same on motor vehicles, watercraft, and personal property as last year. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Abshur. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next is acknowledgement of receipt of the Pikeville Independent Schools tax rates. They're the same as last year. 74.7 cents on, per hundred dollars of assessed value on both real and personal property and 15 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value on motor vehicles and watercraft. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the Pike County Extension Board 2024 tax rates. They're the same as last year. 3.80 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value on real property, 3.92 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value on personal property, and a dollar, 10, 1.10 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value on motor vehicles and watercraft. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is, is there a motion to authorize placing all tax rates on one court order?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item, Frankie, we have treasurer's business.
I just got two things real quick, Judge. Authorize a check to GeoSynTech Consultants in the amount of $7,157.15 for two invoices for the solid waste landfill expansion.
Is there a motion to authorize a check to GeoSynTech in the amount of $7157.15 for two invoices for the landfill expansion project?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
The last thing I have is to authorize a check to reimburse the city of Pikeville in the amount of $115,800 for a Caterpillar backhoe and a Tommy lift gate. Those are items they purchased on our regional recycling grant that we're paying them back for.
Yeah. That's not our money. That's grant money that...
Yeah, we were advanced the money.
Okay. Just want to make sure the public understands that. Is there a motion to authorize a check to reimburse the city of Pikeville in the amount of $115,800 for Caterpillar backhoe and Tommy lift gate to be paid through the recycling grant that we received?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I had, Judge.
All right. Frankie, I'm gonna need your input on this. Greg, you want to come on up for a second real quick? Okay. So the first thing we had on the awarding of bids, before we talk about the pickleball courts, Greg, let's talk about the other items, if you don't care.
Yeah, I have several things, Judge. We had a bid opening on September 20th on bid number 35-2024 for a salt dog, 7.2 cubic yard salt spreader. These are salt spreaders that will go in the Peterbilt six wheeler trucks that we actually received, I think, about the end of November last year, not in time to buy equipment for it. We had one bidder. It's mid-state equipment from Buchanan, Virginia, at a price of $32,375. This equipment is on our Sourcewell contract pricing co-op. This piece of equipment meets all the specs that were in the bid package. This bid also includes the installation. Be my recommendation, we award the bid the mid-state equipment for a bid price of $32,750. We'll need to purchase two of these salters for the two newest Peterbilt six wheeler dump trucks.
Judge, if you could do my hand, if you could check the, what he said, the purchase prices. I thought I could do this.
Say it again, Greg.
Thirty-two, $32,000. You did. $32,375. I don't know how I put 32.750 on the bottom. It's $32,375.
Good catch, Roy. I didn't catch that many of them.
Good catch.
So how many, so is this for one or is this for two?
There'll be 32,300, $32,375 each. It's for two, the two newest Peterbilt six wheeler that we bought.
Frankie, we got the money to do it right now? Okay. So we can't plow, we can't put salt down without salt spreaders.
Correct. Now, also, Judge, also, Judge, we bought these two Peterbilts. We also bought a Kenworth. I hadn't got all the pricing together with. We need to buy a plow for each one of those trucks. And then the Kenworth truck will take a Henderson spreader. So probably next court meeting, I'll have the rest of that equipment to fix up those two Peterbilts and that Kenworth truck.
So this was from, was it from mid, you said it was from mid-state equipment?
Yes.
So we're, do we need to buy two of them?
We need to buy two of these salters for the two Peterbilt trucks.
So the question is, did we put them out for, we put them out for bid?
No. Yes, we put this out a bid because, I'm sorry, this was not on Sourcewell contract. The other products that we have to buy for these trucks are on Sourcewell, but I hadn't got all the quotes yet. But I did put a bid out for this, for this salt dog because it was not on Sourcewell contract.
So, but the bid was just for one, is that correct?
It was to establish a pricing contract for this product, but we really need to buy two.
Okay. So is there a motion to award bid number?
35.
Three, wait, there's a typo there, too.
Right, 35.
Yes, it says five. Bid number 35-2024 for 7.2, two 7.2 cubic yard salt spreaders to mid-state equipment for the purchase price of $32,375 each. And authorization to issue payment for the same by the treasurer.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
The second thing I have, Judge, is the quotes I put together for the pickleball courts.
Just, let's do that one last.
Okay.
Let's talk, let's talk these other ones out first.
Okay. Something that we usually do once a year, but somehow it's got by me a little bit, and it's been about a year, a year and a half, is we buy clothing for Solid Waste Road Department and Public Works. We usually buy five shirts and a coat each year. I wanted to go ahead and try to do it now and get it ordered so we could get the coats before the cold weather. We give them an option on either long sleeve or short sleeve shirts, or two long sleeve and three short sleeve, whatever they want. And I've compiled all these numbers, and there'll be 486 short sleeve shirts and 89 long sleeve shirts. The short sleeves are $15 apiece, and the long sleeves are $16.87 each. So for all the shirts, it'd be a total of $8,791.43. The coats are $61.70. There's 115 of them. That'd be $7,095.50. So for all the, all the shirts and all the coats and everything, it'd be $15,886.93. These are all class three, class three clothing. United Central is on our, on our annual contract. That's where we bought our clothing before, and they, they like that clothing real well.
Is this for solid waste and road department?
Solid waste, road department, and Public Works.
All right. Is there a motion to award the, to purchase from United Central under the existing contract, the shirts, T-shirts, and coats for the road department employees, solid waste employees, and Public Works employees for the sum of $15,886.93?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott. These are ocean compliant, correct, Greg?
Yes, sir. They're all class three.
All right. And we have a motion, a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
We had discussions last court meeting about the dozer that we've been renting from Boyd Equipment. We, we rented this dozer after the flood in '22 because we were needing it pretty bad. And then after we got most of that cleaned up, I think we got into a lot of bridge building where we needed this dozer. And really, when we look at it, we have actually rented this dozer for 29 months. To purchase this, they were going to give us 70% of the rental that we paid credited toward the purchase. That came out to $30,297.32. We did some additional negotiating with them on that. Something we also got included was a 12-month, 1,000-hour powertrain hydraulic warranty and also a $1,200 parts and service credit. And we can buy the dozer with that warranty and that extra service credit for
All right. Is there a motion? Say it again, the purchase price, Greg, 24? Okay. Is this road department?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was, that was a new dozer we took.
All right.
And secure for.
It's a, it's a D5K Caterpillar.
Is there a motion to purchase the D5 Cat dozer that we've been using from Boyd Caterpillar?
Motion.
For, for, sir, for the sum of $24,717.76 with a 12-month or 1,000-hour powertrain hydraulic warranty, and also a $1,200 parts and service credit and authorization to issue payment for the same?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Abshur. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scollit?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
We had some discussion in our last court meeting about flooring in the finance office. I had, at the time, I just had two quotes, one from Lowe's and one from May Carpet. We had contacted Bentley, and they haven't, hadn't come. They have come and give us, did the measurements and give us a quote. Just to remind you, the Lowe's quote was $17,951.92. The May Carpet quote was $11,421. The quote I got for Bentley is for $13,188.24. So they're about 1,700 some dollar higher than May, but they're wanting $10,000 upfront to order the product.
Okay. What's your recommendation, Greg?
Well, I'm not sure that we've ever done that before, pay money upfront for somebody to order something for us. We've always paid for everything once we get done.
Yeah, I've never, I don't know that we've...
I know they're out of county, but they are also 1,700 some dollars higher. If you want me to make a recommendation, my recommendation is that we award this quote to May Carpet for a price of $11,421. Also, that May Carpet has agreed to kind of work on our schedule as far as maybe come in like the middle of day on a Friday and start working in the conference room in the hall. We'd be out of there at 5:00. They could work Friday evening. They'd work Saturday and Sunday. If they didn't get finished, they would come back the next weekend and finish.
All right. Is there a motion to award the job for the carpet in the finance offices to May's Carpet for the sum of $11,421?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussions? See you now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
All right. Now, that leaves us with the pickleball courts.
Yes, sir.
Bruce, you and Bo want to come on up here? Whoever's with you, we can talk about this.
Why don't you introduce yourselves so that way everybody knows who we're talking to here?
Can I go first?
Bruce Collins.
Tell them your name.
I'm Bo Collins.
Good job.
How's Bo doing today? Thanks for leading us in the pledge, by the way.
You're welcome.
All right. So, we talked last week about getting some quotes to do some pickleball courts. I've had a lot of people talk to me about this, and, um, the quotes came in a little higher than I had hoped, uh, and that's with us doing some of the work, a lot of the work in-house. Greg, you all, you all want to run through this with us and?
Yeah, uh, in our discussion last week, uh, at first we talked about maybe taking one of the tennis courts at, uh, at Hardy Park or John R. Phillips Park and, and painting lines for the pickleball court and have a temporary net unrollers or something, but I think those two tennis courts probably get more use as far as tennis than any other courts in the county. I know Belfry has a tennis team and they practice and play there a whole lot, and, um, we kind of considered building a whole new court over there, and we got some pricing on it. For the asphalt, it has to be done, uh, first. If we do that work in-house, in other words, our road department does it, they'll put down a hundred-and-twenty-foot by sixty-foot by three-inch-thick asphalt. Uh, doing the, doing that work in-house, it costs us thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. I got a couple quotes on the fencing that would go around it that would match the fencing that's actually the tennis courts now. Uh, the low price was overhead door, price of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and I got a quote from Reed's. They'll do the whole, they'll do the resurfacing on top of the asphalt, do all the line painting and install the nets, uh, and everything for twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, the complete project-
And that's for four, that's for four courts?
Yes, sir. So, for a complete project, a whole new court, asphalt resurfacing, fencing, painting the lines and nets and everything for Hardy Park would be fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. We also had discussion of converting the tennis court at, at Johnson Bottom, Freeburn Park. Uh, there's a single tennis court there that gets absolutely zero use. Uh, you know, we understand how pickleball is becoming such a big thing, and, uh, we talked about maybe trying to convert that tennis court at Freeburn, uh, over to that. Of course, the asphalt's already there, the fencing's already there. Uh, they would go in and resurface the court, pay off, paint all the pickleball courts on there and, uh, and put up the permanent netting, and, uh, the price for that, for the Freeburn project would be twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, a whole project at, at John R. Phillips Park at Hardy would be fifty-nine, two seventy-nine, twenty-five, and the whole project cost at Freeburn would be twenty-nine thousand. If we want to do both projects, the total cost would be eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, and I think it'd be a great thing for our county.
Well, let me ask you a question, Greg. So, at Hardy Park, it would be for four pickleball courts?
Yes, sir.
And the resurfacing would be twenty-nine thousand from Reed's?
Resurface the painting and putting in the net.
But, uh, how many courts would that give us at Johnson Bottom?
Four. When you take a normal tennis court, the size, you can put in four pickleball courts. You know, it go, 'cause it goes sideways, more or less.
You know, this is not budgeted, so that's what, that's the next question, Frankie. I mean, where are we, where would that put us in terms of, where could we find it?
I'd budget it just, uh, about like five thousand dollars for each park and for a hundred. So, basically, as far as being a budget, I'd only go about like thirty thousand for park or three to this year.
So, we have to do-
Probably cover these two, and then, like in the future, if we want to do other parks, maybe in March, when we do the next year's budget, work them into a thing.
Where could we come up with the money? And the other question is, is it, I mean, are we gonna be able to, you're the, you always ask this question, can we afford to do it right now?
We can, yeah.
Is it gonna cost us any trouble down the road financially? Okay, I take your word for that on the money side, so you, um-
I'm assuming in the future, uh, I mean, like if you start replacing every tennis court in every park-
I don't know how many, I don't, I don't know how many other tennis courts do we have? Paul, how many? Where, where, where we got them at, Paul?
We got one at Bed Creek, one at Lick Creek, two at Hardy, one at, uh-
Phelps.
Don't know.
So, you only got, so I'm not sure that we would do, you know, maybe one more. I mean, I wouldn't think doing Lick Creek and, you said the other one was where? Mouth Card?
Fed's Creek.
Fed's Creek, I don't know if you, you know, that'd be fairly close together. Um, I mean, you don't have anything awards in the Shelby Valley area, that probably would be my, the next place I would look would be over in that part of the county.
I know they definitely have a pickleball club at Shelby Valley.
What's that?
They, they definitely have a pickleball club at Shelby Valley. I'm not sure where they play it.
You know, I saw that, I saw the News Express had a poll up and people were against it, but look, I mean, the one thing that, the detriment of the living here is there's not a lot to do. I mean, it's, you know, we live in a rural area where you don't have a lot of recreational opportunities. Growing up at Virgie, if you couldn't get a key to the gym where you could get in to play basketball, we didn't have a place to workout, there was nothing to do. Fabian will tell you, that's, that's pretty much the truth. And I think if we could get more people active, makes people healthier, it gives kids something to do, it's an investment in these communities.
Judge, also, I, I, I just think that a lot of things that people are against is because they're in favor of wanting something else, and again, I talk to-
Or they're just against it just for the sport of being against it.
Sometimes that's the case as well, but there's a lot of people that want a lot of things, myself included, uh, but we have to realize that a lot of those things that we may come and ask for or we may want are sometimes multimillion-dollar investments, and you know, it's just, it's just hard to do things like that this day and time. And I'm talking like, uh, you know, big complexes and things like that, and we just, those are just not feasible at this time, I don't think.
My kids was all up for it when I got home. They watched the last court meeting, my kids at East Ridge, well, my senior daughter, she's been playing it, and, you know, that, that's something we look at, is closer to these high schools, maybe at least wanting access to that later on down the road, 'cause it tickled her to death, you know, the thoughts of it, 'cause she, I did not know what you're talking about, what she's talking about, but according to her, they all love it.
Commissioner, it's just, it's one of those sports where there's just a, there's a social etiquette to it, uh, so whether you're good, bad, whatever, everyone makes sure that everyone feels welcome, you don't have people fighting, it's just a, it's a good, clean environment of, of entertainment and fun for people of the community, and a positive influence on kids that come to those places.
Well, I want to make a motion that we, uh, do both the four pickleball courts at, uh, Hardy Park and the one at Johnson Bottom for the sum of eighty-eight thousand, two seventy-nine, twenty-five. Is there a second?
You know, I've sat here and I've thought about this a lot, but you know, like we've got, uh, uh, parks real close together like over at Phelps there. Could we cut one of them? I mean, and I, I know it's, if it's not, not using it a whole lot to help us with this pickleball court.
Well, Paul probably would tell you, we're not having to spend a whole lot of money on upkeep on them right now.
Okay, all right.
Uh, the one I think that probably is in the worst shape is the one over at Majestic. Is that true, Paul? Or is it?
Probably, yeah. It's Lick Creek, Fed's Creek, it's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, and like I've said, the problem comes, Jim, is when some of this playground equipment breaks or has to be replaced, you'd be shocked at how expensive some of this playground equipment is, and, you know, when you're having to use, Paul has such a small staff, when something does break, it's just hard to, it's, I mean, you don't have enough manpower.
Well, I mean, it shocked me, I, I had Paul and we, we fixed, put a little swing in over at, uh, Grapevine. I think that thing was about nine hundred dollars for handicap.
Oh, yeah.
It shocked me, but, you know, I'm like you, it's expensive.
The playground equipment's expensive. I mean, in reality, should there be three parks in a five-minute drive? Greg, can you drive from all three of those parks over in five, five to ten minutes?
Yeah.
Every bit of it? That's just, that's just, that's just, that's just that old, good old boy system that, you know, of, uh, you know, I mean, it's living beyond your means is what it is. What I've always said is I would like to have each part of the county have a really nice park.
Right.
Because if you live at Wood, but it ain't a big, it ain't a big walk, it ain't a big drive to Johnson Bottom. Uh, if you live at Three Mile, it ain't a long drive to Dorton. If you live at Virgie, it ain't a long drive to Longford. But, um, when you've got, you know, and, and here's the thing, on the, on, on my home part of the county, we don't have that situation. You don't have three parks on Longford. You don't have three parks at Dorton. You don't have three parks at Marbonne. And it's just a matter of living with, you know, meaning, so, but, you know, and I'm not saying taking something away from them, I'm saying that let's make it nicer and give the kids more to do, instead of spreading the money around to where you've got three mediocre facilities that you don't have the manpower to keep up. If you have one really nice one, it would be nicer for families.
Yeah.
And that's what we've been trying to do at Johnson Bottom. I mean, the pool that, when I took, took office, the pool was shut down. It wasn't open, was it, Paul? Pool hadn't been open in years. We opened it up. We put a roof on the, uh, the, uh, the, uh-
Pool house.
Pool house. We've done work on the park equipment. You had a batting cage at Johnson Bottom that had rusted out, that's set out in the weather for years, total waste of taxpayer money. You had a putt-putt course that didn't even have turf on it that nobody used. You had a skateboard park that I bet you ain't body, it shocked me if anybody rode a skateboard on it. And you, a fifty-gallon garbage can wouldn't have held the garbage that came out of the inside of it, pop bottles and food wrappers. The basketball courts may have been the most ludicrous thing. Instead of the basketball court goal spacing each other, they set like this. I mean, I've never seen anything like it before. Um, and we've gone in there and to try to redo it, and when we get it done, hopefully in the next couple of years, it will be like Hardy Park, it'll be Dorton and Longford, there'll be nice parks. And if we can get these pickleball courts done and people use them, then it's a, a good investment. If people don't use them, then I'm gonna say we don't need any more of them. But, we've got, we've got growing interest in it. I've had people from different parts of the county talk to me about it. Um, but as we go forward, I think we need to use these parks, this new, this one, particularly the Hardy Park and the Phelps, and if, and if, look, it may be something that if it takes off, that we want to build one in other parts of the county, Grapevine, uh, Dorton, Longford, Si, you know, wherever. But if it doesn't work out, then we don't have to build anymore.
Right. Judge, I just want to reiterate one thing that I said the other day. Um, you know, I've run the, the baseball softball league over several years and, and try to do everything we can to keep the kids and children involved. Um, but over there, you know, we've got our baseball fields and softball fields and playground equipment. Well, all that is geared to our kids, and I'm all for that. I mean, I'm a hundred percent pro-youth above everything else because we have to, we have to invest in them, keep them here, because they're gonna be doing what you all are doing someday, you know, we want to keep an interest with them. But, something like this allows something for our, our teens, our adults, our, our seniors and everybody else to, they have a reason to go to our park there, you know? Uh, so you've got, you've got the sheds in place already, I can see, you know, uh, you know, you get a vision for these things when you start thinking about them, and you know, you can see community events where they can go play pickleball, you know, you got a baseball field and you got playground equipment that's already there for the kids to play on, and there's just something for everyone to do contained right there in that one area.
They, they had kind of wanted another piece of, uh, playground equipment at Hardy. Uh, last fall, we had discussions of that, and I talked to some companies. It's unreal how expensive this playground equipment is. You know, kind of a good-sized, big piece of playground equipment, it's like ninety and a hundred thousand dollars, you know, for a piece of playground equipment. We can build, we can build these four pickleball courts cheaper than we can buy a new piece of playground equipment. And, and one of the, one of the reasons I don't care to eliminate the tennis court at Freeburn and make pickleball courts is because there's still a tennis court at the Majestic Park if people in that area want to play tennis.
I mean, you, you're a longtime tennis player, Greg. You played competitive tennis.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody even play in tennis over there? I know you all used to have people play, but it, I mean, is any, I mean-
It's, it's, it's kind of gone away, to be honest, especially in that area.
You know, I remember when I was growing up, people played softball everywhere. I mean, you know, you had a lot of people played softball, and you don't see that anymore.
Very rare.
Uh, it's, it's pretty rare. And, you know, um, that may, may happen with pickleball, but right now, it's something that's popular. Uh, but, you know, going back to Hardy Park, I mean, that swimming pool was not open when I came in as, as judge. It's open now, and-
Shed redone.
We've redone the shed, we've got the parks, prob, that park's probably in the best shape it's been in a long time. Paul's done a lot of work over there. Is there more we'd like to do? I would love to see the Hardy Park, that top level closed in to where you could do, you know, do stuff with it in the winter, but it's a cost factor. Um, but, you know, I'm willing to support this, to see if it works, um, but as we go forward, if we do it and it's not used, then, you know, it's not as bad as putting a pitching machine out in the weather and letting it sit out there.
We can always put up a volleyball net afterwards.
You know, you know, I mean, um-
And, and by the time you evaluate these two pickleball courts, it'd be time to do the budget next year anyway, that if you decide to do more, then we could work them into next year's budget.
Did you make a motion?
I got a motion, you got a second?
Say.
Second by Commissioner Abshire. Um, any questions or discussion? See you now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Judge, that's all I have.
All right, one last thing. Bobby, Greg, on a different subject, how have we, how, are we making, Paul, are we making any progress on our Greasy Creek Community Center reconstruction?
We had, uh, Kevin up for our front.
Hey, Greg, one, one thing before I forget. Since we're doing this resurfacing, uh, for the, for these courts, I'm not so sure that we're not gonna have to put a bid out, 'cause you've got over the forty thousand going to Reed's, uh, on this. We'll probably need to put that out for a bid.
I, I can understand that, Judge, uh, but kind of the way I looked at it, I think they're the only place that does that unless we pull somebody from Lexington or Charleston or somewhere.
Roy, I mean, what I'm saying is though, I still think you have to put a bid out on it.
If it's, if it's all, if it's a sole source, if we can evaluate it to be a sole source, we may not have to.
Well, let's get the county attorney's opinion out, 'cause I don't-
Judge, also in that, I think that was, uh, Mr. Reed donating a lot of the labor in that price.
I just want to make sure we don't run afoul of the auditor, so- Okay. I agree with Roy on that. Thank you. So, where are we on Greasy Creek?
We've got, we met with Kevin up our Friday, Bobby and I. And we looked at the old foundation and we about just got the old foundation filled in. But he's wanting, he's thinking we can go back on the foundation. That's what he's working on right now, is where the cabin used to sit.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm a little afraid of it, but he said, no, there won't be no problem, you know.
Are we talking about a slab build, a metal build? Or are we talking about-
That's what I'm talking. I said, no, we want a slab build. He said, yeah, we can do that. We want to try to still use that footer. I said, you know, we're about four foot down. I said, John. He said, we can do that. I said, it wouldn't be better for us to go behind there. And, but we got, Bobby is supposed to be checking the property line, because I don't know how much property we own up there either. It's not from fence to fence. We, we thought it was, but-
Have you got, have you got that, Bobby? Have you got the? I just had some folks up in Greasy call me to see how we were progressing on it.
I went and looked up the deed. There wasn't a plat that I could find down in the clerk's office. But it definitely does not go fence to fence. As Paul said, it kind of goes in a straight line from, or in a line from back there to back of that walking track that's close to the fire department.
Right.
And kind of goes down and right by the old building and, and kind of, and to the fence there, close to the shelter on the right there.
Well, my question is, why would they go in there and fence in a piece of property that they don't own? Who owns it? Do we know that?
That fence may have been there to start with on that lower end.
More education. I'd say original owners, because we're right there with the school, you know, Old Greasy Creek School.
They, they basically sold to fiscal court, the piece that's closest to the creek, straight down from the fire department building that's up there.
So, let me ask you this.
And they kept this section over here.
The board did?
Yes. And that fence may have been there the whole time. We may not fence that. I-
So, my question is, was the existing building off of our property?
No. It's on our property.
It's on our property.
By 11 feet, I think we.
So, we could go back with the metal building just in that same footprint?
That's, that's what our plans are right now.
What's the next step in this project, then?
We're waiting on Kevin to see what he can draw up. We want to open the park back up. We want to, I got a little bit more to fill. And then he said, we can go ahead and fill it where we can open the park and get to use the playground equipment and walk tracks.
All righty. Let's keep me posted.
Kevin's getting some numbers together on the metal with the standing seam roof and, and things like that. And, and he's actually going to get, we're going to get a price from the, the old log people that provided it, just so we'd have the numbers to compare with.
plans and then we can see. All right. We have any executive session?
No personnel whatsoever.
No personnel, all right. Anything from either department supervisors? Jerry, I want to say that Jerry sent me a screenshot. We're getting a lot of traction on the hillbilly trails, Facebook posts, 11,000-plus followers, a lot of interest in it. How are our ticket, Jerry, you want to come up just real quick? How are our ticket sales and so forth?
Judge, the permit sales are going very well for our first-year trail system. I've said before, I'm very pleased with the fact that we have sold writing permits to riders from 30 other states, not count Kentucky. It's bringing in just a great amount of tourism dollars. These people are coming. When they come from other states, they usually stay three, if not four nights. We've had at least seven people either convert homes into Air bnbs, had a campground built. One gentleman that's bought property and had CC Road that connects, connects directly with the trail system. He's a carpenter by trade, build homes, does a construction work for businesses. He intends to build tin cabins. So, we also got county citizens becoming entrepreneurs and going into business. The trail system doing exactly what it designed, what the intention for it was.
Now that we've got an agreement with Berwin-
It's, we got it verbal with Pocahontas.
Pocahontas, I mean. What's the, what's the next step of trying to get it connected over into the, you know, northern part of the county?
That's my number one goal was to the next move. We need to get this Pocahontas agreement in writing. We can get it, let Roy and myself review it. We get it signed, then we can start connecting individual landowners.
Is that, is that the next step, is getting a written agreement with them?
It is.
Can you all get something done on that maybe in the next two or three weeks, something?
We're waiting on them. And we had a phone call made just this past week to the vice president who does all the dealings, vice, excuse me, the vice president of Pocahontas. And he said that they aren't moving forward on it. Of course, they are busy, but he said he would get to as quick as he could, because we explained to him that it's actually a holdup for us to, to move forward with that.
Gotcha. All righty. It works.
Thank you.
Fabian, I need to speak to you afterwards on this FEMA issue. I did talk to Congressman Rogers' office this morning.
You did talk to him?
I did. Yeah, we, we got to make a phone call since we get done.
Well, let's do it.
All right. Roy, anything?
No, sir.
What do you mean, anything?
No, sir.
All right. Anything from Commissioner Atkins?
Judge, I'd just like for everybody to keep Peggy, Lisa's mom, in prayers. She's in Lexington, waiting on a liver transplant. I read right before I come in here that it wasn't happening today. So, just everybody keep Lisa and her mom and that whole family in her prayers.
Will do. I knew she was sick. I didn't know she was in Lexington. So, Commissioner Asher?
Say happy birthday to Bobby Bradham. Everything's going well. A lot of work getting done. A lot of people are giving good comments instead of bad right now, I think. And the county is doing a great job.
You got a lot of hard-working people trying to get this stuff done. And Fabian's crews have been working hard. And-
Judge, I do have, and I hate to do this, but I do have something that the court probably needs to know. Is our big paver, our bank paver, it did go down on us Friday. We were up in Octavia putting down some patching. And the, the right drive pump that drives your tire in the conveyor, we'd have trouble on that side. It had broken two or three chains on us before. But something's happened in that main, in that drive pump, and it, it blew and the whole shaft came out. So, it is that boy being fixed. But I just wanted the court to know that. I put a call in this morning. They've not called me back to tell me, you know, if they've ordered a new pump or what, or if they're going to try to rebuild that one. But I just wanted the court to know that that slowed us down also. That, the only one we have is that small paver, but he is out paving.
That, that stuff happens.
Yeah. I just wanted you to be aware.
Appreciate it. All right. Commissioner Asher, anything else?
I'll be there.
Commissioner Scott?
I just think all the workers of the county, everything going pretty good. But we, Fabian said we had a little bad luck with the paver, and that probably throws us out a little bit. But still paved with a small one, can't you believe it?
We are.
I appreciate every, every one of y'all, what y'all do for the county, you know. And me sitting here, all I think about is moving the county forward. I've got a heart for that, you know. I mean, God told me, they said, Ron, should you worry about too much? I said, no, I don't. I said, if you got a passion for something, it'll bother you. Thank you.
I don't have anything. So, with that being said, is there any other bids to come before the court? If not, then Jim, would you do the meddiction and then we would-
Let's pray. Gracious and merciful and kind-loving heavenly Father, Father God, thank you for another beautiful day. Thank you, Father, for being with us here today and helping us to, as Ron says, to move his county forward and do the thing, Lord, that we could help and be a better county and do the things that we need to do. We thank you for all the things, knowing, Lord God, that without you, we could do nothing but with you, do all the things. I just pray you'll forgive us when we fail. You go with us and watch over us. In Jesus' name I pray, and amen.
Amen.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebbishar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.